Good evening, my name is Greg Ferris. And as President of the Forney ISD Board of Trustees, I hereby call the Forney ISD Board of Trustees meeting to order. It is now 6:02 PM and I certify a quorum is present and the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required by law. These monthly meetings are open to the public, although the meeting is public, comments and questions from the audience will be confined to the time designated for citizens to address the board. Thank you for being with us tonight. If you would rise, we're going to have an invocation led by Barbara Jo Green.
Father, thank you for the time that we had together tonight to be able to consider the issues that this district will be facing with the fast growth that we were enjoying. And we just ask that you give us wisdom and guidance so that we'll be able to be making the right decisions with discernment. And we also thank you that we have the opportunity to serve the children of this community. I ask it in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Ms. Green. I want to have pledges by Hannah Baker.
(Inaudible) to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Honorable citizens alike, I pledge allegiance to the Texas State under God, one nation, one nation.
Thank you again for all joining us tonight. Moving on, next is item number four, the public forum. At this time, nobody has signed up to speak. We'll move on then to item five, consideration and possible approval of an order calling a bond election to be held in the Forney Independent School District, making provision for the conduct of a joint election and resolving other matters incidented related to such election. This time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Weber.
Mr. Ferris and Board members and Dr. Terry, it's really a pleasure to be here tonight and kind of give you a little taste of all the great things that our committee did. We've had a lot of committees through the years, but we really, really had a great one this year. Fantastic collaboration, high participation, great community involvement. And so we've invited some of our committee members to come and tell you what they did and what they accomplished. And they're going to speak for the community tonight. We have students, we have faculty members, we have community members. One of our students was unable to attend. We had a student from each high school participate in all four nights, but our student from North Forney had a prior engagement and couldn't come tonight. But we do have one student still here from Forney High that will speak and represent kind of the student voice in our facilities committee. So I'm going to turn it over to them and they are going to deliver a really great message to you.
Okay, good evening, Dr. Terry, Mr. Ferris and Board. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. We had a very good time in this facilities committee. I had the privilege of being in the 2019 facilities committee, so I was familiar with the process and was very honored to be able to attend this facility meeting. Tonight, we're going to have some different speakers. We have Austin White, he's from Forney High School, he's a senior. We have Letitia McLean, she is a learning specialist at Blackford, a parent of several children who attend Forney in elementary, intermediate and high. And we have Nick Edwards, who also is a parent and a community member, and he is a pastor at CLO. He has two children in the Forney ISD. So I'm going to turn it over to Austin White and he's going to make his presentation.
This past month, I was given the opportunity to be a part of the Forney Facilities Committee. I got to learn a lot about what the school board does and how y'all plan out the expansions of our school system. It was probably really the biggest eye-opening experience I've had at Forney ISD. Biggest thing I can give you right now. So we were given the charge of planning for the future needs of Forney ISD and with the large growth that we've experienced this past couple of years and are going to experience in the next 10 years, we're here to give you our recommendation tonight throughout the years. We, over the past month, we started out with approximately 14,700 students and through the month, we gained 260 students. And we're planning for the next 10 years to grow to 35,000 students. We want to have a chair for each student, which 40, I think I was told, $40,000 to put into the entire Forney ISD program.
I was excited to be asked to be a part of this. Like I said, it was eye-opening and a lovely kind of part of stuff. I can say, hey, this is the mark that I left. I was a part of that, that school, I was a part of making the decision on building. During this committee, we saw a lot of data. Numbers, it's different when you see it on paper. I mean, we see all the growth, everyone, the traffic is bad, but when you see it on paper, it becomes real. So this yellow line, that was the projected growth back in 2016 enrollment. And then we get to the red line, that was 2019. I wasn't a part of that bond package committee, but that's what drove that bond. And then we can see 2021, the blue line. So it just keeps growing, it's going to be off the charts. So this slide is showing the build-out. The committee was amazed, I was amazed at the growth coming, 2,400 students per year for the next few years, that's what we were seeing. So we're going to be doubled in size, we'll be doubling. It already feels that way. But eventually, we're going to see 47,000 to 55,000 students. So we're going to need a lot of campuses for that. We need the facilities so we can house all of those students. We want to make sure everyone is successful, so we'll need that. This slide is, the growth numbers, they're speaking volumes. So now we're being compared, we will be compared to a Plano, a Frisco, a Klein ISD. And I know that's kind of hard for some people that have been in Forney for all their lives, you know, little town of Forney, now you are a city of Forney, a major city of Forney. So this is what we have to look forward to. So within the next 10 years, we'll have over 35,000 students. So our committee, we got together each table and we decided, how can we get the facilities to meet the needs of all of us, it's 35,000. So you'll see on the next slide, there's going to be a video and it's going to be a time lapse from 1985, when I was a little kid, until 2021. But I'd be curious to see what 10 years have bring, 2031, so.
Good evening, Dr. Terry, Ms. Ferris, School Board. I want to say thank you so much. It was really a great honor to be able to serve on this committee as well as serve on the 2019 committee. For me, the most significant thing that we talked about and that we looked at, from my personal takeaway, was that Forney has become a destination. People want to move here and people are, all this time and all this energy and all this planning, all going into place because people want to move here. And a big reason for that is because of you. Because of our administration, because of our school board, because of the vision, it really is amazing to see that, as I talk to people, people want to move to Forney because they want to make sure they're in Forney ISD. And so for me, that was a huge takeaway and it was exciting to know that a lot of this growth comes because of your leadership. The Facility Committee was made up of 60 diverse members, parents, grandparents, business owners, district employees, community leaders who all believe in your vision and for where this district is going. Some of us had served on the 2019 committee and we were able to review what that bond package looked like. You can see that up there, that slide, and just being able to see the things that have been completed, things that are in progress, and all the things that are upcoming with all of the construction planned to end by the end of 2024. Things of like adding elementary number 10, adding a gym and tornado shelter, to Race and Smith Intermediate campuses, expanding the transportation hub at North Forney. And due to maximizing all of these dollars and being under budget, being able to have these as part of the 2019 bond really was a huge thing. During our meetings, we were able to look at and understand and have all kinds of finance lessons. And so I think that's on slide 14. And then although Mr. Chase may be the only one really excited about those finance lessons, we were all excited to hear that the tax rate had actually dropped over the last several years. So everyone in the community was excited to see that part and Mr. Chase was excited that we all learned about these different things, to see that it had dropped 17 cents. And then we were able to understand, our recommendation from the Facility Committee primarily impacts, the 50 cents there is part of the INS and that rate is capped and will not increase. And so we were able to learn about that, understand that process, understand what that looks like. And then our committee felt very confident in this, understanding how the approval and issuing of bonds and this two-tracker system and the accountability that goes along with that and starting these new facilities. And so we know that the growth is coming. Letitia spoke to us about that and we all have seen it, we've seen it in our neighborhoods and our community, we know that that growth is coming. And seeing that some of these first green lights are already in place, it's time to make the recommendation moving forward.
And I have to point out that Letitia said that, mentioned 1985. She asked me whenever, how long I had been here and I said, since 1981. And she said, oh, that's the year I was born. So, oh, well, thank you, okay. Anyway, we did, we came together as a committee, 60 of us, and we did discuss, you know, all this financial stuff and all the growth that we had had, that we've had. And it was surprising, but not surprising, because all you have to do is travel around the district and see all the different various homes that are going up and plans of new homes going up, to know that our city is growing. And so we came together and we met in different groups. We had table groups in the, I think there were about six or seven table groups here and we were, we sat down and we had a great time and we discussed, well, of course, we learned all this about the growth and we started to discuss what our district needed to be, to prepare for 35,000 students in the future. So what we did, we were given the task to create a needs assessment for this growth. And so that's what we did. And whenever, this was on night four, after we did the needs assessments, each table turned it in and it was brought to us in one package. And, excuse me, that's what, yeah, go back to that, please. Okay, and so that's what we saw. And we saw that all of the tables had just about the same recommendations there. And so we, this is how we came up with all the plans for the new possible proposed bond roll-up. Okay? And after we saw these, the needs assessment, we were asked to vote on whether or not we wanted to send this recommendation to the board. And as you can see, it was a unanimous yes. And so that is why we're here tonight, to bring this proposal to you. And here is the bond proposal, the proposed bond roll-up for 2022. And I'll just let you read it and you can see that what, all that we felt was necessary.
As you can see, they were a really great, involved and committed committee and we are very thankful for the work they did for our community. And there's the whole screenshot of them, look at their faces and their shirts. But they did a great job and they presented some really great information for you. And so at this time, I'd like to know if we have our leadership team here and we have committee members, if you guys have any questions for us to answer.
Are there any questions from the board or comments?
Appreciate it, appreciate it. When is the last? I know I can't get that light.
Dr. Terry, any further comments?
You know, it's an exciting night, it's a landmark night. And just to share a few things, but you know, just reiterate what Ms. Dobbs said is, you know, that's a lot of time to give away from your family and it really speaks to, you know, how much this community really cares about this district and supports this district. We had a wonderful turnout of a wonderful diverse group that represented our community from all walks of, the corners of Forney ISD. And I've just got to stop and first say thank you and give them a round of applause. I think we have a few also committee members in the audience tonight. So if you don't mind, let's recognize this group for the time they spent. Ms. Ferris, the board, you know, this was an incredible charge that you handed to the committee this year, which was really to bring back the recommendation to support the 35,000 chairs that we will eventually need for our students here. And I do think they've done a great job. And when you look at our growth and comparison to some of the other districts around the metroplex in the state, we continue to be one of the fastest, if not the fastest. In fact, I believe, I spoke with the Prosper Superintendent the other day and we took the number one slide and I was happy to tell her that. But I also reflect back about three years ago, when Prosper was just ahead of us and they were growing at just as fast a pace or faster. And they recommended and were successful with the bond, actually larger than what you saw tonight. So we are among the elite, among the unprecedented growing school districts across the state of Texas. So I think the committee has done an incredible job. I would reiterate that what you saw on the screen tonight will not affect our tax rate, it will not increase the tax rate. But I do think that the job that they have done and the recommendation that they have made will meet the needs of this school district for a long time. And so we're very excited to also make the recommendation from administration standpoint that you approve a bond and call this election to be held this May 7th.
Ms. Ferris? Thank you very much. We do appreciate all of your efforts and your whole committee and all of the others that were here with us tonight, because it was a long month, a busy month, you had some bad weather in there, delayed, but even after the bad weather delay, everybody came back together to finish up and wrap it up. And as you see the picture there, a great cross-section of all our community and even representatives from other communities that our district borders and touches participated this time. So it was great to have such a diverse group to participate this time. So, boards, are there any further questions? Have you heard the recommendation from the committee and from Dr. Terry and administration? Do I have a motion?
(Inaudible) the board group, the board of calling a bond election.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Baker, thank you. Do I have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And I hear none, so it is approved. Thank you again to the committee, we appreciate you. Then we'll move on to item six, consideration approval resolution relating to establishing the district's intention to reimburse itself for prior lawful expenditures of funds related to construction and equipping various district improvements for the proceeds of tax exempt obligations to be issued by the district for authorized purposes, authorizing other matters incident and related thereto, and providing an effective date. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Now that the board's called a bond election, the district might incur costs associated with proceeds that we might receive from an election should it be successful. So those costs might be, architectural design pieces is probably the biggest one, but in order to begin the process and in order to get those projects, at least start the planning phase, it's likely we'll get costs or have costs associated with those projects before any bond proceeds would be received. Since that's the case, those costs would have to come out of the general fund until we would get the proceeds in our bank account in order to pay for those election costs and so, I meant, excuse me, the construction costs. So we have a resolution before you tonight that would allow the district to reimburse itself for those pre-costs associated with any construction project that's related to this bond election. And our recommendation is that the board approve that resolution so that we can reimburse ourselves in the future, once those proceeds are received.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Dr. Terry, any more comments?
No, sir, this is something that you should be used to. We did this a few years back with our 2019 bond referendum as well. And this is just an opportunity to make sure that we can keep up with the growth and stay ahead of some of our pre-designed projects right now. So we would recommend that you approve the resolution for reimbursement as presented.
Thank you very much. The board, you've heard the motion's recommendations, are there other questions from the board? I hear none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the resolution for reimbursement as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Green, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And I hear none. Moving on to item seven, consideration possible approval of the AIA with Gallagher Construction. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. The district entered into a construction manager agent contract with Gallagher Construction Services about four years ago now. That contract is set to expire next year. And now that we have called a bond election in May, the possibility of additional construction projects extended beyond next year is certainly possible. Since this is the case, the administration has recently been in negotiation with Gallagher Construction Services on a new contract that would extend that term for five years or actually start now and go for five more years. And the new agreement includes a fee reduction anywhere between a half, two, three-quarters of 1%. Now, I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but with the scope of this project, I mean, that could potentially save the district four and a half million dollars over the life of this bond project. So Gallagher Construction Services, performance on the projects that they've been a part of so far has been excellent and the ones that have completed and it's been excellent with the projects that we still are currently in the various stages of completion. And so our recommendation is that we would approve this contract as presented with the Gallagher Construction Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Any questions from the board? Dr. Terry, any comments?
No, sir, we do appreciate the partnership with Gallagher Construction and they always do us a great job. And I will say one thing, if that's okay, they were, they actually offered out the reduction in fees, really without a prompt. And so that just speaks to the character of their company and the work that they do. So we would recommend to continue our relationship through this bond project as well with Gallagher Construction and this AIA.
Thank you, Dr. Terry. Do I have a motion for the board?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion for the AIA with Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Regan, may I have a second?
Second.
Hannah, thank you, Ms. Baker. Do I have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I hear none. Thank you very much. I do want to also say I appreciate Gallagher and their loyalty and their due diligence that you do on our behalf every day. So we thank you for that and we appreciate it very much. Moving on then to number eight, consideration possible approval of Huckabee and Associates and Architects to provide architectural services for the 2022 bond construction program and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute an amendment to the agreement with Huckabee and Associates Incorporated for Middle School Design. Ms. Kim, who's that?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As you know, the great partnership we've had with Gallagher, we've also enjoyed a great partnership with Huckabee Architects over the last several years. And the growth's coming and we need to get some pre-designs done for our middle school and intermediate projects that are coming up. And so we're recommending that we amend our AIA with Huckabee Architects to allow pre-design for the middle school and intermediate projects coming up and to give Dr. Terry the ability to negotiate the terms of that AIA.
Dr. Terry, any comments?
Thank you, though, this is just one of the pre-designed projects that we were referencing. We are already, if you can believe it, the fast growth that is coming, already behind on a design construction of the next intermediate middle school. And so we would recommend to go ahead and approve the amendment to a future AIA with Huckabee, to go ahead and get started on these projects. Even at today's timeframe, we're still about three to four months behind where we need to be to get these facilities opened on time, based on the projections we've seen. So we would recommend granting authority to the superintendent to continue to negotiate this, but allow us to go ahead and get started with Huckabee, with our two middle school and intermediate projects.
Any questions from the board? I hear none, I'll call for a motion.
(Inaudible) the board's to like Huckabee Associates Incorporated, the most highly qualified provider of architecting services with 2022 bond construction program and boards with Texas government code chapter 2254, and delegate authority to the superintendent to negotiate and execute in the neighborhood services right there and we will watch.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And I hear none. I'd like to take a moment before we go on here and thank Josh Brown for being with us tonight, President of Huckabee and one of his vice presidents, we're in there tonight. So I appreciate you guys taking time to come over. Moving on to the number nine, consideration possible approval of an order calling for a school board election for positions five, six and seven for May 7th, 2022. Turn it over to Dr. Terry.
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. We do have three seats up this year, positions five, six and seven. And so we would recommend to the board tonight to go ahead and call for the election for school board seats as well for the May 7th, 2022 election.
Any questions for Dr. Terry? May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion that the board approve an order calling the school board election for positions five, six and seven as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Green, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I hear none. Thank you very much. Moving on to 10, consideration possible approval of contract with Kaufman County for election services for the May 7th school board election. Dr. Terry?
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. We've had a great relationship with elections in the past with our county and we have been still working with them on site locations for elections, would reference the handout that we have provided at the DICE for you. We have been working up to the last minute with them since there are multiple elections throughout the county. So we have some proposed locations that you'll see in front of you. However, the county is waiting till next week to send out final contracts. So we'd ask that you provide superintendent authority tonight to negotiate through those terms, but that we would recommend a contract with Kaufman County for the election itself.
Any questions from the board for Dr. Terry? I hear none, may I have a motion, please?
(Inaudible) the authorized superintendent to negotiate final election for May 7th school board election.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Regan, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I hear none. Thank you very much. Then item number 11, consideration possible approval of the use of electronic voting system only for both early and election day voting. Dr. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. We have used these systems in the past. This county has not changed the approach that we have taken from an electronic voting system. And we would recommend tonight to go ahead and utilize that through our early voting and election day voting. So we would recommend that you approve the electronic voting system as presented. presented.
Thank you, Dr. Terry. Any further questions from the board? If there's none, I'll accept a motion.
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the use of an electronic voting system only for both early and election day voting.
Thank you, Ms. Regan. May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Dobbs? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I hear none. Thank you very much. Next is our closed session. Is there any reason or anybody felt they need to go to a closed session, create a discussion? Okay. If we don't need that, we'll skip that. Move on to item 13. That moves on to announcements. Just to remind everybody, our next board meeting will break, our board meeting will be February 28, 6:00 p.m. And then spring break starts March 7, and then April 4 will be the following regular school board meeting after that. Anything further? Dr. Terry, do you have any?
Just quick, just a quick reminder, no school tomorrow. However, we have to make up our ISD on Monday. So what I've been told by all of the parents was that was a mother's holiday we created on Monday. They get to stay at home from work and they're sending their kids to school. So they are excited. So, no, just wanted to remind everybody of our makeup day. Thank you.
You have one more that you didn't announce. April 6?
We do have one more. I apologize. You're really getting out there in the spring, Ms. Gallagher. April the 2nd, correct, is the Forney Education Foundation Annual Casino Night. It is a great event. Tickets are on sale now. And I bet Lisa Gallagher can stay after and help you if you are interested in tickets. Or a title sponsor or a table sponsor.
A table sponsor, title sponsor.
No, it's at the Kaufman County Civic Center this year.
Kaufman County Civic Center.
And it's casino, disco, something or other. I don't know what it's at.
Boogie Nights, alright.
It's your disco that does all the comedy.
Disco night theme, okay. I've already got my sequins ready.
Sounds good. Anything else you might have missed?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, no. Thank you for that reminder. Nancy, you'll add that to future agenda list also. So we don't forget that day. Alright, thank you very much. I appreciate you being here tonight. It is now 6:34. We'll call this meeting adjourned.